Yeah.
His whole practice is just, he doesn't even have a vet truck. He has a Jeep, a bunch of his parts and stuff. Instead of the vet truck with water tanks and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Good evening, residents. Good evening, everybody. Uh, today is Tuesday, February first. It's a few minutes after seven, and we're gonna start up ready to meeting. So we stand up and we'll do a meeting shortly.
We would like to invite the United States of America and the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We would like to have a moment of silence to go on to the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Ms. Edwards, can we have roll call, please?
Justin McQuire.
Present.
Justin McQuire.
Present.
Justin Batt.
Present.
Okay, so first thing is review and approval of prior meeting minutes. Um, we have not got, it's just been chaotic and I've not had time to get that started. But I do guarantee that by the next meeting, we'll have this meeting and the first meeting ready to go. So, um, we'll get better on that. We did approve all of twenty, and we're working on getting all the minutes for twenty-one transcribed as we decided in the first meeting. Thank you. Okay, uh, the next on the agenda is the fiscal officer report. Ms. Edwards, you're up.
Okay, so I passed you guys the comparison of budgeted and appropriated and, um, resources available for appropriation. This is basically the summary of what I'm gonna give you, that thirteen-page report. So it shows you the overall summary of what the comparison of budgeted and appropriated. Turns out what our fund balance was, um, or is not closed. This twenty twenty-one is not closed out yet, so this is gonna be what it is as of today. But when I close out the year, it may change a little bit, the first column. You understand, twelve, fund balance, twelve thirty-one. It may change when I close out the year because there's still a few POs open. If you look in the second column, it said reserved for encircers, twelve thirty-one. Those were the, um, amounts that were reserved to pay. Um, the POs that, the POs that are still outstanding, I have to go and verify what those values are and close them out. Like basically if you look at the fire EMS, it says seventy-two thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and nine. And I have to see what those POs are, see if I can close them out. It's not gonna stay, it'll stay there because I may have used them this year. Some of these I have, I used them this year, so you can't close them out for now. Uh, one, two, three, the fifth column over is estimated resources. These are based on what we, the stuff we received last year, like, um, lighting district, like, um, EMS collections.
Estimated revenue.
Yeah. Um, those are, oh, insurance, um, cable money we get, those type of things are listed in that column. And then, of course, the total estimated resources of those five is added up in those three columns. Well, actually, the fund balance and the estimated revenue minus the reserve for encircers. And then, of course, the one column that says final appropriations with which you guys approved the temporary budget, which you approved, that's the summary of all of that. Okay, any question on that fact? And of course, the variance is the difference of what the resources minus your appropriation. If there's a negative in there, that's when you want to worry that there's not any negative. And the next page is, um, resources available for appropriation. It's kind of, uh, this is just a bigger summary of the same thing. It just doesn't have the variance in it, so it's just a different view of what you have. If you see the numbers, they're basically the same. The total fund balance, the estimated revenue, and the total estimated resources. So what I'm pointing out here is the estimated budget is six million one hundred sixty-seven thousand. Okay? This means that we're, there's a, um, different brackets. We had that up in the audit on this, because we weren't paying on us in the brackets. So we're over the three thousand, three million five hundred, the six million. This is over six million, so we moved up a bit. Now, this could change, though, but this is what we got in the budget. So once we do our final budget, if this number's above six million, we're gonna have to think about, you guys are gonna have to consider whether you want to increase our compensation because we'll get written up by the audit. But right now, this is just to give you a preview. It may go down, um, once we do our final budget, but just keep that in mind.
Yeah, sound a little bit.
Because it's pretty close.
Yeah.
Okay, that's that on that. Um, any questions so far? I'm still trying to catch up on a lot of invoices. Uh, he is farther from us behind. Um, every two weeks, courses payroll. Um, so I gotta stop doing the fiscal officer job, paying bills to do the payroll. I, um, this, this, November to April, it's just a really bad time to have deadlines to meet. I made the deadline to get our, so tip to estimate resources to gesture that. I have to get ten ninety-nines out of, I don't know if he's late or no. Right now, I'm not thinking straight, and I don't get a lot of sleep. So I don't know what else I'm behind, but I'm, mostly the bills is what I'm concerned about right now. Um, I've got the important ones, but our light is still on.
Yeah.
Our water's still running, uh, gas, we still got that. But, um, the other ones, they're more forgiving. Just have to be careful, somehow, because they'll charge interest if they're too late. Oh, they'll call me, so I'll get phone calls. No, they won't forgive the records. So, so far, I'm okay. But no, I'm gonna have to get my house fixed. Any other questions, any comments, any concern? Think, other than I don't have any bills straight aside, just those POs are in there.
Yes.
I need to get them. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one. Um, you gotta pick up the snowplow, so you gotta have a check.
Well, I didn't, I didn't think you could do that, yeah?
I, I figured it out, two thousand eight international.
Yes, yes, it is, yeah. And I know the vehicle was, I just didn't, I didn't reach in the, uh...
Yeah, I found it. There's not enough money in there, so that's one that's gonna have to be increased.
Okay.
The bill was like eighty-six dollars, um, over what we had in that, we had budgeted in that.
Okay, well...
So I took it out with another fund house repair maintenance. And...
So we drive over there and introduce myself to him, talk to him, and, uh...
Here's the, um...
I will hand over that check.
This is for the road department?
Yes, this is for the road department. So here's the check, right here, um, for that. Just give me all the paperwork back, and you take the top two sections. Once you get that signed, and I'll file the rest.
So they fix this snowplow? That's one, like this. Um, so we have two snowplows, and one dollar...
I think we have three, don't we? Um, how many snowplows do we have?
We have three.
How many snowplows do we have?
Three.
Three?
Yeah.
How many are...
We need two.
We need two?
We need two, we have two pickup trucks and two snowplows. Those will be useful. We have two pickup trucks. We have...
How old are they? How old are those trucks?
Two thousand one, two thousand...
Yeah, so, yes. We gotta be some paper. Or you spend a little...
How many do I have? And I'll get it, how many do I have?
Come on.
Do you need to have an envelope, I can put it in, or you just want...
Please, yes. Thank you.
So, other than that, um, we're just waiting on, um... I don't know what's happened with Buckeye. Are they gonna still do the email, are they still gonna do the camera?
They never did the emails, huh?
Right, and it's also getting POs for the three, three remaining projects.
All right.
Camera.
For the cameras, we have to have a PO.
So the PO is already, that's in the mailroom.
Okay.
Yes, I saw that. PO didn't sign it. What about, what about my work guy, did he get an email?
That would be part of this project, once they, once they come down to do it, or with me on the phone, the bill will be a part of it.
Okay.
But he was not in the list they did.
Which work guy didn't get an email? Is that, is that, um, one guy, one, there's two of them that don't have email. But one's told me today, and he can't get the page, though.
Well, once we have this class and they teach us how to do it, we'll give them a lesson.
Okay. And in the meantime, I have to pull out a page, though, until he gets the email.
Do you think you can, um, create like a roster of emails?
They, they sent me one already, a spreadsheet. Shows true, true or false, true, they work, false, they've been shut down. So I got that.
Okay.
Did, um, Brian Peters mention it?
Yes, I met Brian Peter, or am I off, okay, just talk about that then? I met with him today, um, he gave me, um, the, uh, the information for the, the cameras, um, and some other information that's in the folder back there. Um, he handed it off to me today, stated that, um, at some point, um, from his report, Mr. Wolf told him that the township doesn't have a credit card. So Buckeye was putting certain charges on their credit card that they have not billed us for yet. They're supposed to be coming up with some documentation and the invoices and all of that to show how that was. But he stated that, um, per Mr. Wolf, we didn't have a credit card. So I wasn't a trustee, so I'm not sure how that process worked. Um, but he's supposed to get us the, um, paperwork afterward.
Nobody ever told me that they needed a credit.
So...
I, I mean, if we knew that they needed, but it was never communicated, and I don't know what the community is, any other trustees. But somebody should have communicated that to me, so that we would have known if they needed a credit. So there was a break in communication, and that's what we need to, I think we need to clear up. I've always told you guys that I'm open, you can call me anytime. Fire department has no problem calling me. Um, and trustees call me. I'm not, I'm not bound under such a law, you guys can talk to me. I'm not a decision maker. You guys can talk to me. So there's nothing that says you can't, that says you cannot talk to me.
Well, one of the things we want to do going forward is approve our policies and procedures. We've had these conversations, and we brought up the credit card policy, I think it was from seventeen. But that needs to be, we've been hitting on the audit about it, in that we don't have people signing out the credit cards. And there's a policy, a procedure in effect, we need to bring back up and just use it. And that's one of the things, though, is, you know, you sign a credit card out, you're responsible for that. When you make a purchase, you get, you have to give you the receipt, and so it's...
I mean, because if you don't give me the receipt, and I can't balance the book, then we got a problem. And the auditors are gonna slap us on the hand and say, you don't have a receipt on that. Two years down the road, if I don't get it the day that you use on the credit card, two years down the road, you're not gonna be able to get it, it's gonna be hard to get. So if you get, if you get a, a credit card receipt, give it to me. Put it in the envelope.
Yeah.
Say fiscal officer on it, and it's once a week or once a month. I don't care if it's once a week, you can come up here, put it under my door. I'll have me here at least once a week.
And if you are assigned a credit card, you should not be giving it to anyone to use in your absence. Other arrangements should be made, um, in those situations, because the card is assigned to you. And if somebody goes out and they do something, make a purchase, that's not, um, Jefferson Township property or, um, purchase, then you will be held responsible for that purchase.
Now, speaking of credit cards, wax fuel cars, we've gotten a lot of fire vehicles. And we need to pull back, I don't know how we can do this. We need to pull back all the cars, including the roads, all those probably need to pull back and reevaluate, because I don't know who's monitoring those fuel, wax fuel cars, but they're not being used for the vehicles that they say. But some of them don't have it, but they're still getting fuel in their car. So we need to figure out how we can, we pull those all back and get them to the right vehicle.
Okay.
Except for across the board, the road, fire, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if the administration has an issue right now, because nobody's driving above the code enforcement. I don't know if anybody's even driving those two cars right now, there's two vehicles for administration. That's the code enforcement car, which is probably the roads, too, and then the administrator.
Administrator's apartment is free.
Right. So I don't think there's an issue, we still need to get those, I think you gave me that card. But we need to do something, I mean, we can't have it out of service, we can't take them back at this old age. Once we do, we gotta do it and do it fast. So what I've tried to do is get in contact at the county to see what they suggested. So, but it's gotta be done soon, because, okay, so we can't talk about the, um, of the one vehicle, was that the chief one vehicle that we got with care of that one? It doesn't have a car, right? Chief two vehicle doesn't have a car either, does it?
We're sharing one car between three separate vehicles.
Was it assigned to the car?
Chief two never had one.
Okay, chief two never, chief one got one assigned? Okay.
EMS one had one, but it was, it was taken back.
So some of the cars are missing, too.
Well, I, they turned in, uh, the administrator's car, so...
Well, I got that, but the EMS vehicle, you just said EMS.
So how, okay, when you get gas, you gotta identify the vehicle, you gotta put in the...
No, don't identify the vehicle, just the mileage, mileage, the odometer, and then the driver's pin. So I have to go to him, get his card, go get gas, put in the odometer on my card, and then my driver's pin. And then I give it back to him.
But the thing is, you put in the odometer, and it might be lower than it is.
One, 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 nine. Well, his odometer's out, so what do you put in there? One, 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 one?
So, um, I thought, I ran it to you guys, it's something that I need to look at, what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Um, uh, credit cards are a big thing, because not only do we worry about the bank credit card, but we also worry about town accounts. When we do our credit card account, those things count, too.
Okay.
Um, we have to identify that, so it's more than just like the, the actual cards.
So the cards are actually, um, assigned to the vehicle?
They're supposed to be assigned to the vehicle, and then each driver who drives it has a PIN.
Okay.
And then that's how you know, and then their name comes up on the report, you'll see it, I think, sent out of the report.
So, so what's happening is that other people are using, uh...
No, they're moving the card from the vehicle to another vehicle. Not, I mean, I don't know how, how frequent that is, but I know some of them have them. Like you said, how's EMS getting their gas in their car, so they'll have a car, that they use. And when you guys look at that thing, are you getting accurate report?
Is this something that just kind of started happening, or...
No, we had some issues with cards being mixed up, and I had it in mind. And we had the administrator, they had the wrong card for the code enforcement, and of course, um, the administrator's car. And another reason I noticed, because I said, I know the code enforcement's not driving that car as much as it is, so I said, I said, Mr. Wolf, you have the wrong card, and so I think he changed it out. I'm hoping he did, but I don't know where the code enforcement card is, do you? I just see, I think, yeah. So that, that's one thing I'm concerned about, is where are these cards? You can't use them unless you got a PIN, granted. So if it got lost in the floor in here, nobody couldn't just pick it up and use it. But, but we don't want that to be happening.
Tracy, last year, Wolf collected the cards that was no longer being used. Yeah, I had three or four of them in my drawer, and I turned them back in again.
Okay, so somehow we gotta find out where that went, because I never received it.
That's where the MS one, the card disappeared, because that used to be the old white blazer. That's why that card, that card was turned in.
So, I'll have the county, will they turn them into that?
Are they issued by the county? Okay, we gotta, we gotta get, um, hands on it.
So how many vehicles is it, I mean, how many cars altogether?
I don't know, I have to, I'll look and see, I can take, you don't have a record of any fire problems, do you? It should be a card for each vehicle.
Yeah, every, every vehicle that runs, but we're going, and service should have one. And our, like, the ten new hires, I just got the emails turned on, a lot of them has a driver code, yeah. Uh, I had, I had a complaint from a guy from a year ago that we've asked, we need a, a fuel code for him.
So we gotta, so...
Still doesn't have a code.
That question is still gonna be the focal point.
And this is the problem, just like the keypads on the door, people are passing their codes out. So you've got somebody at this gas station, the fuel station, and we're low, they don't have a code yet. They call somebody on the telephone, and one of the other firefighters gives them their code, so they can fuel up.
Just can we possibly assign each department here to, um, the account of what, what's cards they have? So we know which ones are missing.
I, I was thinking we could do that, but, um, that would be the road department, mostly the road department and the fire department.
I'll dig into that.
It's easy to fill out on a report, because if I, you, you, the report'll show somebody put gas in a fire truck twice in one day, and it's just, that's physically impossible. We're not running that hard.
So you have to see one of the reports, too. I thought I sent it out already this month, but I was looking. Now I have one, I just haven't sent it yet. And it's not, it's probably for December, it's not January, it's just December.
Did the rescue ever get a card, was it ever assigned one?
I think we did.
Okay, you did?
I think they did.
I'm making a motion to accept the fiscal officer's report, um, pay the bills, uh, invoices, and warrants.
A second.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, please, Tracy.
Justin McQuire.
Yes.
Justin Batt.
Yeah.
Justin McQuire.
Yes. Okay. So now we're on to old business, and the topic we had here, we talked about in the work session, is the adopt a budget meeting schedule. And in the work session, so everybody knows, uh, this will be, uh, publicized. Uh, we'll start, uh, February ninth, well, it'll be Thursday except for the first one. The first one is February ninth, that should be next Wednesday. And that'll be the road department. And, uh, starting Thursdays, the next Thursday is, uh, February seventeenth. These meetings are all at six, six o'clock in the evening. Uh, will be the general on seventeen. The fire will be February twenty-fourth. Then on March third, we'll have a wrap-up and approval of the budget. It gives us some books for, uh, Tracy to get everything put in, and it's gonna be done by April first. So, uh, we'd like to make a motion that, uh, we approve the budget schedule as just mentioned.
He gave you a second.
Okay. Uh, good?
One favor.
Roll call, in all favor, aye.
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 Okay, that's the only thing we have on here for old business, and any other old business, uh, any trustees we're talking about?
We're gonna be getting the bill for the, uh, what is called a bad tow. You got flagged, are you, you gonna send us that? The towing issue that you wanted to reverse on?
Ken? I'm sorry, what?
The bad tow, the invoice for the bad tow.
Yes, um, do you, what, what are we physically, I got his name, address, we need an actual...
I need an invoice.
Okay.
Or something, so that, but, uh, no, because I haven't had that on my record.
We, we sent the Sandy's invoice, do you need something?
I didn't give it.
Additional to that, or the Sandy's invoice?
I didn't give the Sandy's.
But will the Sandy's invoice work?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we have to pay, unless you, did you have a letter with it that's...
Yeah, I sent a letter and a copy of the, uh, invoice that he paid. So it, it's, you know, he's already gone down and fronted the bill, and, you know, recovered his vehicle, so, um...
Can you send me all that in front of the...
I'll send it all to him. Yep.
Remember, so the, the order asking me what's this for, I have all this. So whatever you have, that you can give me, send it.
I'll send you everything over tomorrow, and if you need anything else, just let me know.
The payday on that's gonna be back to the homeowner, it's not going to the sheriff's.
It's not going to tow, it's not going.
It's, it's going back to the actual owner of the vehicle.
So but you have that, you have...
He's already paid, yes.
But you have that in the information you sent.
Yes.
Okay. Just make sure that's clear, so I don't make a mistake, because I got a lot of other...
No, no problem.
And the other old business. New business. So, uh, we discussed, and the only thing we have on here, uh, in the work session, we talked about, uh, the OTA, Ohio Township Association has a conference. And, uh, we're gonna make a motion to, uh, have expenses that occurred by, uh, the trustees and the fiscal officer to go to that, uh, conference and get educated, be reimbursed by the township, do an expense, some expense paperwork.
Do you want to give the resolution to the town, or you just want to do a motion?
Just a motion. So, uh...
There's a resolution, I remember that.
That's why Sandy, Wolf, go ahead and use it.
No.
Okay.
Try to come back with resolutions. So, uh, all, and all in favor of, of, uh, be able to expense the, uh, the OTA? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, so that passes. Okay, any other new business trustees?
Oh, I just wanted to ask about, um, have we heard anything about the mailboxes?
I can talk to Hank again, last, as I said, last, last time I talked to him, he physically has them. He was waiting on labels being made to address whose is whose. So I, I will email him and ask him.
And the mailboxes go on the outside of the building?
Yes, yes, outside of the building, yes.
And it would be for all the, um, tenants?
Yes, yes. And, uh, I did test, there's a intercom phone on there, and, uh, I did call myself, and I had emailed to that effect, so you pick, if you come in the building and you wanna talk to one of us, there's a list there of what extension, who gets whose. And when you call that, and, uh, if the person's not here, which we're not here that often, you will get, you will go to a voicemail. And that voicemail is set up, at least it did for me, you will send the person you're trying to talk to an email. So there is record that you call them at this time, this is what you said. So it does work, so, uh...
This morning, a Buckeye called me, I was at my desk, they called, so it came to my desk.
Okay, so, anyway, that's, that's working. Any other new business?
Yeah, we have res, two resolutions.
Oh, yeah, that's resolution, yeah. That's resolutions, thank you.
Oh, new business.
Yeah. So resolutions for consideration, um, we started with thirteen, so this would be, uh, fourteen. Okay, so the first one we got on here is the Jefferson Town, so it'll be twenty-two dash oh one four. Jefferson Township Board Trustees hereby agree to accept the twenty twenty-one annual highway system mileage certification. So, anyway, uh... So, anyway, uh, we're losing, uh, point six oh seven miles in, uh, Jefferson Township. And we have forty-three point two eight three miles of roads that we maintain in the township. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution two oh dash one oh one four.
One second.
Second, the motion.
Oh, she will do it.
She will do it.
I just have a quick question, so how do we use that?
That's, it's on my P scale, I'm not sure how this number gets...
Somebody does the vibration, I don't think, I don't have this letter. Tell you that.
The entry of the public?
Yes. I don't think it tells you, we have to call, ask them here. But I think one year we gained some, and then the next year we lost it. You know, what's that?
It's, well, all I know is, it's a formality, we have to pass it every year, the mileage, but I...
Ohio Department of Tech, Transportation. So, Ohio Department of Transportation and Dick Management. This is where this goes back to, it's even out of his office, but the Ohio Department of Transportation, we have to, transportation, where we have to send it back. And there's a number here, that would, I mean, someone could call Maslin.
No, just, when he says it increases sometimes, sometimes it decreases.
Due to the incorporation of, um, it was a, I can't remember. It's a reason for change, and due to the incorporation of, I don't know what that word is.
This initial L D R S data, Procyon County Evolve Update, to the mileage was made for Jefferson Township. So, whatever, I don't know, we just...
Yeah, whatever that is, so some system, I don't know, something like that.
So, has anything to do with the road closed due to the bridge or not?
Well, that's a year old, this is back, this is what abandoned before that bridge went out.
This, this is last year.
Yeah.
It was point six oh seven. So, it's a little half a mile, I don't think that would've been a bridge, but...
Roll call, please, Tracy?
Um, Trustee Bat?
Aye, yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need you guys to, um, assign the resolution, and then assign the, heck, if you're in the old town, give me all the sheet traffic.